Welcome to the Board of Education's November 3rd Work Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Watson.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every feet and every tongue.
As was public notice, the Board met an executive session this afternoon at 4:30 with members from the Knox County Law Department. Mr. Big Board, would you mind and just explain that a little for the public?
Sure, we have to. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board meets with our office from time to time to discuss litigation and potential litigation. It's not a time for the Board to deliberate at all. It's just simply for the Board to ask questions to the Law Department, and the Law Department gives the Board information. It's been recognized in several court cases, including Smith County Education versus Anderson. Thank you.
Thank you. And in other announcements, we have a policy review meeting scheduled for Wednesday, November 17th at 1:30 PM in the Andrew Johnson Building Boardroom. Also, several Board members will be attending the TSBA Leadership Conference and Annual Convention in Nashville, November 18th through the 21st. And moving to the agenda, are there any requested changes? We have a motion to approve the... So a motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Thomas for your report.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, had a few brief updates for you this evening. I'd like to begin by sharing two important opportunities for students, employees, and families to provide feedback about the work of KCS. Our district has developed a plan to gather insight into the expected role and relationships of law enforcement with students, staff, school administration, and school personnel. This will include individual interviews with community leaders, focus groups, and an electronic survey to be sent in January. On Monday, families received a questionnaire to gauge their interest in participating in one of the focus groups. Space is limited, and participants will be selected through a process developed by our Research, Evaluation, and Assessment Department, with the goal of having representative groups from across the district. As I've said before, I believe it's important to provide law enforcement officers in each of our schools, including both school security officers hired by KCS and school resource officers provided by our law enforcement partners. Our district is also committed to receiving community feedback about these important partnerships, and I'm confident that this process will help us accomplish that goal. Also want to highlight a district-wide survey that will be sent later this month and is related to the 2022-23 budget. The survey will focus on the district's fiscal priorities as well as strategies to improve engagement with our stakeholders. Would also like to give an update about our district's work to promote educational equity. As many of you know, the Disparities in Education Outcome Steering Committee has worked for several years on strategies to eliminate disparities in discipline and educational outcomes among various student groups. The DEO's original five-year mandate expired this summer, but I'm pleased to report that the committee will continue its work with some important changes. Going forward, the committee will now be operating as the Alliance for Educational Equity. I believe this name change not only reflects the importance of our partnership with community stakeholders, but also highlights the goal of promoting equity in our work. Our first quarterly meeting took place on October 26th at Central High School. Meeting went very well, I'm pleased to report, and the committee took the important step of adopting a definition of equity for our work, which reads as follows: "Championing the individual cultures, identities, talents, abilities, languages, and interests of each student to maximize academic success and social, emotional well-being by promoting that they receive educational opportunities and resources, even when this means differentiating resource allocations to meet their unique circumstances and educational aspirations." And the committee voted to accept that definition. In closing, I finally want to acknowledge a tragic loss that occurred last week when Junior Santiago, a student at Fulton High School, was killed by gunfire. As our community continues to seek solutions to the issue of gun violence, I want to offer my deepest sympathies to Junior's family, friends, and the Fulton High School community. With that, I will yield the microphone to Steve Rutter for the next installment of our Data Spotlight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Members of the Board, I appreciate you having me back here tonight. So if you remember... One moment, please. So if you remember the last time I was here, we talked a little bit about our district-wide student achievement. And so, one of the things about this student achievement is that what it tells us is what a group of students knows at a certain point in time, right? So they take the TIN ready, the state classifies them as on-track master, approaching, or below, and so we get an indication of what our students know in the spring. So what achievement doesn't inform us of is how much progress our students make, right, over the course of the school year. So that's where these growth models come into play. So growth models are intended to kind of measure student progress throughout between two points in time. In this case, it was, it's actually more than one school year, right, because we didn't test in 1920. So it'll be over the course of two school years. And the model we use in the state of Tennessee, I'm sure you all know this and have heard it, is T-VOS, right? So T-VOS, at its heart, is really just an estimate that tries to quantify the amount of progress a group of students make in a particular grade or subject area compared to other similar students across the state of Tennessee. And so when I say similar students across the state of Tennessee, what I mean by that is students who have performed similarly in the past on the TCAP to whatever group of students we're talking about, right? So when you take student growth information along with student achievement information, you really get a more complete and holistic picture of student learning over the course of a school year. So when we talk about T-VOS, generally what you hear people talking about are effectiveness levels. So I wanted to take a moment to make sure we're all on the same page about what T-VOS levels mean, because T-VOS levels are easily the most misinterpreted thing that we talk about for school data. So first of all, a T-VOS level is an indication of two things all at one time, right? So it is, at first and foremost, it's an indication of whether students exceeded, met, or failed to meet their growth expectation based on a comparison of students like them from other parts of the state of Tennessee, right? So did they do as well as students like them, not as well, or about the same? And the other part that's real important is it provides like a level of evidence about how certain we can be that they either met that benchmark or beat it. So what T-VOS levels don't indicate is the amount of growth students experience over the course of the school year. There's some other things that we can look at to determine that, but T-VOS levels, you know, it's not accurate to say students who, a group of students who earned a T-VOS level five grew a whole lot more than a group of students who earned a T-VOS level three, right? What we're talking about is certainty when we're talking about these levels. So if we look at the top on the T-VOS level five, so what that would indicate is there is strong evidence that this group of students we're talking about, in this case, it would be, we're talking about high school students tonight, so there's strong evidence that our students exceeded, or did better on the state test, the TCAP, than students like them from across the state of Tennessee. The level four is similar, right, so our group of students exceeded or did better on the state exam than their comparison group, but the evidence isn't quite as compelling for that, right? Level three is the too-close-to-call, right? So they performed similarly enough to students like them that we don't really know which side of that line they fell on, so we say that they met their growth expectation, because they performed similar to other students all across the state of Tennessee. Level two is there is some evidence that they didn't grow as much as students like them, and then level one is there's strong evidence that they didn't grow as much like them. So I hope that made sense. So that's, it's hard to... T-VOS is a complicated subject. It's hard to describe it in a few minutes, but that was my best effort. So Ms. Satterfield asked if we could look at specifically high school T-VOS today. And so when we look at, when I looked at the T-VOS or the growth levels of effectiveness for the district, we had a pretty good year in terms of like the district overall. So we were, we had a district-wide composite of level five. So that means our students in all, when we take all subject areas, put it together, our students performed better on the state exam than students that looked like them in the past for all subjects, right? Our numeracy, we were also a level five, and our literacy, we were a level four. So that's all, those are all good indicators, and that's what we want to see. But when you start pulling it apart by grade band like we're doing tonight, what becomes pretty evident is like we had really strong growth in our elementary grades, three through five, and the evidence of growth gets weaker in the middle grades, and it's the weakest at the high school. And so you're going to see some of that here in just a second. Right, so this is a chart that shows each of our 15 high schools and their school-wide T-VOS composites. So you can see this is kind of mixed results here. So what we really want to see is T-VOS levels of three, four, or five. So they either met or exceeded growth expectations in those instances, and there's evidence of that. So seven of our schools earned a level three, four, or five, right? Eight of our schools earned either a level one or two. So this is, we usually look quite a bit stronger than this. So I think, again, the pandemic probably had some impact. And if you recall from last time, I discussed the participation rate, especially for high school students, was not very, was not up to snuff when we compared to previous years. We tested about 80 to 85% of our students in high school subjects. Compared to a normal, like pre-pandemic year, we would have tested 99%. So to me, that's an indication of the motivation to engage with the assessment, right? Like I think that, you know, the assessment not counting as a part of their grade and all the interruptions to instruction kind of had an impact on how hard these students tried on the test this year. So that, but that's my, that's a Steve Rutter theory. That's not, I can't prove that. So one thing before I move on from this slide, though, I want to point out, I need to give a shout out to South Doyle High School, because, yes, there you go, because... Because not just, not just are they the only high school that had a school-wide composite of level five this year, they've had, they've been, they've had a school-wide composite of level five since 2015. And the year before that, they were a level four. So that is an extremely long period to like demonstrate evidence of student academic growth. And it doesn't happen by accident. It happens by being focused and working hard. And so Tim Berry and all the teachers out there, man, they should be proud of that. I'm sure they're aware, but they should be proud.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I know I sat on something with the state talking about TCAPs, especially when you get to high school, because you have the kids that are in like AP classes. Really, your top students don't end up taking the TCAP. So how does that sort of skew numbers? Or is it that you're just comparing the same kind of students across the board from the state, so it evens it out?
So it's, so the way T-VOS works, I'm going to talk about it, I'm going to talk about it in terms of one student, because it's easier to understand that way, but it's really groups of students we're talking about. So like if I'm a student and I've taken the TCAP since I was in third grade, so what's happening is it's comparing my performance to another student whose test history, like all the way back to third grade, looks very similar to mine. So and it's comparing how I did on this year's test to how they did. And so if I do similarly, they say, okay, you met the growth expectation. If I do better, you exceeded it. And if you don't do as well, you did not meet your growth expectation. Does that help? Does that answer your question?
Yes, I just, what I'm wondering is what happens in high school when you've got these kids that draw, taking it, and we're not in that field.
Well, so for high school, they all, they all take English one and English two, right? They all take Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. So and that's what's included in here. Every student will end up taking those courses.
Even if they're like an AP class, they're all going to take English two?
Oh.
That's why I didn't do anything.
Yeah, West High School is maybe an exception to that. So most places, most places AP starts in the, at the junior year. Am I right about that? Yeah, okay. So, yeah, okay. So I'm going, so the next slide breaks this down for just our literacy subjects. So this is the English one and English two. So again, it's a similar picture to the last slide that we were looking at. So seven of our schools were level three, four, or five, and then eight of our schools were level one or two, which, you know, suggests they didn't do quite as well as students like them across the state.
Ms. Horn also has a question.
Oh, sorry?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I just want to make sure I'm clearly understanding. So basically what you're saying, back to the other slides, basically you're saying that this is only comparative, so it doesn't really actually indicate proficiency.
No, no.
Right, okay. So I think that's important to make sure we understand that. It's just a comparative, and you're not even comparing the same kids to their own performance, right?
Yeah, it's, what it's trying to do is to take into account like, so how a student enters into the school building at the beginning of the year can definitely impact proficiency, right? Like if they're really far behind, like that student, it's going to be difficult for them to catch all the way back up. But like for T-VOS, that student can still make progress, right? And so what T-VOS is trying to measure is the amount of progress that the students make.
So if you have a school that is, if you have a kid that already is making the highest grade possible, their T-VOS is going to be a one?
Not necessarily. Like even kids at the top, like there's safeguards built in. Even students at the top can still grow, right?
Okay, I've always been like a little confused by that, because it seems like if you've made 100 and you make 100 this year, that's not actually growth.
Right. Well, there's not a lot of students that make 100. There's very, very few of those. Because, I mean, they design these tests so that there's super difficult questions, because the idea is they're trying to separate student performance, right? And so I'm not saying that it doesn't happen, because it does, but even those students, like there's still room for growth. And remember, we're not talking about one student. We're talking about a group of students. So it's unlikely that every single group kid in a school is going to perform exactly the same as they did last year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so our literacy, sorry?
You didn't make the words.
That's right, I didn't know. Okay, so our numeracy looks a little bit better, right? So this is normally, this is more a normal picture than what we look at, see when we're looking at school, high school T-VOS. So here we have nine of our schools that met or exceeded growth expectations, and then the other six were ones or twos. So and we had, you know, four of our schools were, there's really strong evidence that they exceeded that growth expectation and did better on the TCAP than students like them.
I have a quick question, real quick. Going back to literacy. Does this, and it might not even have any correlation, because I know that's one of the biggest things that we talk about from the strategic level of like increasing literacy. Like the numbers that we have here, is this, is there any correlation between those two?
Between achievement and growth?
Not even achievement, but are we making progress in making the literacy approach that we have talked about for the last couple of years?
Well, this is high school, so like a lot of our literacy is focused on lower grades. But, yeah, so like, so if, you know, again, like a T-VOS level three, four, or five is what it's saying is like your kids, the students are performing better than students that have had similar testing backgrounds, right? And so as a district, you know, we were a level four. So that's pretty decent evidence that our students are growing more than other students across the state of Tennessee. Sorry. So, okay, so this, the last couple of slides have to do with student groups, and this is a relatively new occurrence in T-VOS. We have never gotten this, up until the 18, 19 school year, we never got student group growth information. So this is fairly new. And there's kind of a lot going on in this chart, so let me explain what we're looking at. So for this one, each bar represents a student group, right? So the first four bars are our race, racial groups, and then the last three bars are what we called last week our accountability groups. So and each segment in each of these stacked bar charts represents a portion of the schools who earned a certain T-VOS level, right? So the green segments represent the portion of schools who earned a level five. The teal is the portion of schools that earned a level four. Red is level three, two is, orange is level two, and blue is level one. So for example, if we look at the bar on the far right, our Students with Disabilities group. So you can see that we had just over 14% of our schools earned a level five for their students with disabilities. 7% earned a level four. 64% earned a level three. 14% earned a level two, and nobody was a level one for our students with disabilities. Does that make sense? Yeah, yeah. I like this slide. Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, but it's kind of hard, there's kind of a lot going on. So the last slide, I tried to simplify it a little bit. So it's kind of the same information, but what I did on this one was I combined the level three, four, and five into the orange segments, and the ones and twos into the blue. So the good part about this slide is that there's a lot of orange on the screen, right, and that's what we want. So, you know, pointing out a couple of things that are on there. For our English learners, every single school that had enough students to have an English learner's student group had a met or exceeded growth expectations for that group, right? So that's really good. We almost did the same thing for our Hispanic students, right? So 12 out of 13 schools met or exceeded growth expectation. And then our Students with Disabilities is pretty high as well, up there at 86% of our schools met or exceeded growth expectations. So that's, I think overall, this is a really positive slide, and I think a lot of people would be surprised that the student group with the, kind of the weakest evidence of growth were our white student group. So that's, that has, like, that's the benefit of taking into account past performance, right? Because it eliminates a lot of the, kind of, it's not bias, but a lot of the, a lot of the impact of coming into the school kind of behind, right? So, okay. So that's all I had for today. Does anybody have any more questions?
Mr. Tian?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Rutter, so I was kind of going back to the beginning. You say that for T-VOS, what they're doing is comparing students who are quote-unquote like, like them. So just for the public, what, like, how are you categorizing students who are like each other? Is it just based on test scores?
So like, I'm not doing it, but the state, SAS is a statistical software company. They do it for the state of Tennessee. So essentially what, I'm trying to simplify this so much again. So what they're doing is they're taking like all the tests you've ever taken and all your classmates' tests they've ever taken, and... all your classmates' tests they've ever taken, and then they're, then they're finding a group of students whose information looks very similar to that. And then, then once you take these exams, they say, okay, that, that group of students, you know, they were, they earned on average this scaled score on an exam, but your class earned ten points higher than that. So they're going to say you exceeded the growth expectation because you did better than all the other students that looked like you, in terms of past performance on this te, on these tests. So it's, it's all correlations, you know, that, you know, it's, it's a complex statistical model, but it's all, it's really all just correlations. Yeah. I don't, did that help as you answered your question?
Yeah, I think it's just that, like, when you say students like them, it's not clear, like, how, like, what are we talking, like, are we talking, breaking down by race? Are we talking about breaking down?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Oh, sorry, is that saying, like, when you say students like them, it's like, I guess some people might have questions about, like, is it just, like, are they based on race? Is it categorized just?
There's scores, in this case, it would. There's no covariates other than how you did on tests in the past. Like, they're, they don't, they don't consider anything else.
It would just be high scores.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, you know, you know, some, some, some states have other models where they do include other, other variables, but Tennessee does not, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what that means is on, from a technical standpoint, any one individual student may actually shift groups over time, right? Because
Yeah.
every test would reinform
Yeah.
grouping that you would, might actually be a part of.
Yeah, that's right. Like, and I, I'm, I'm using terms, like, there's, they do all this at one, like, it's, they do all this at once, right?
Right.
There's no actual group, like, but
No, I understand.
Yeah. But, but yeah, but, you know, their, their students, students' growth expectation hopefully will change over time. It could get higher and higher and higher.
My point in saying that is, T- Vos data is not really helpful at an individual level in terms of a student, right?
No, and we don't, we don't get it at an individual level.
Right, so it's not helpful for that. And so, and Steve, you may not be able to answer this, but I know somebody here can. This, this type of data, how does it get operationalized in the system? Like, as we receive this year to year, how might the district react to this data and shift things operationally? Can, and I'm sure there's a lot of possibilities, but is there some examples that can be offered up in terms of how does this data impact what we're actually doing?
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to let John enter that one.
Yeah, thanks, John.
So, so next time, like, just before I step away from, does anybody have any other questions for me?
No, thank you, Steve.
Okay, yeah. So, but, so next time I come back, I think Ms. Christie asked to talk a little bit more about student achievement, so, and the scope of that's a little bit more, so it's more, maybe, maybe not a data moment, it's maybe like a data half hour. But, but at that point, I think we, we will probably exhaust it all the state stuff that we can talk about at that point, so.
All right, thanks, Mr. Watson. So, one thing that our REA department does a great job of doing, because I think in our, in our past, we, we, you can overreact to data, right? I guess that's what I'm saying. So they do a great job of, of, when we communicate that to schools, I like one way they talk about it, they talk about it about flags. I was just telling Russ a minute ago, I like to see the achievement data with the growth data, because it tells sometimes, and I know Steve did that previously, it kind of tells the story to Ms. Horn's point, you know, there, Farragut may be a level five in achievement, but we saw some places there where they may be a level one in, in growth, you know? And so when, when two flags are pointed in different ways, there's a story and a narrative with that, right? And, and one's not necessarily better than the other, and there's a room for improvement on all of the above. So, so I think to operationalize, what we typically do with this is we'll, we'll, the schools will get their data, they'll have their conversation, they'll look in, then the, the specific areas where they are struggling and, and, or not struggling, they'll look in areas where they've done well, or where they're struggling either one, and they'll try to tell the story or their narrative based on what they're seeing on those flags of data. These are two state data places. Lots of schools also look at, at student data, and they, they score that out and look at that over time. Some schools are using other data sources as well, more in elementary, but things like iReady or other kind of form of assessments. We have Case 21 that'll be coming on board, too, there'll be another data source once we get the ESSER plan approved. So I think you look at all those and, and a practice, again, that our REA did a couple of years ago before all the COVID interruptions to data was kind of, you predict prior to the data coming back, so you kind of know what you're, what you expected and what you planned for, and where you spent your time and resource and energy. And then when the data comes, you look back at that and go, well, did it match? Lots of times it does, because they, you know, they know, and there can be anything in those stories. You know, we had, I know, I was looking at some of those high schools, texting with Mr. Trent, I know one of those high schools lost three of their English teachers this year, and their, you know, their first year teacher. So that, that has an impact, you know? So you, you look at all those things to tell those stories, our grade level directors and supervisors then work with those schools, and they build out their individual state plans that are, that are turned into the state, that here's their areas of focus for the year, and then what they're going to do on an individual basis to operationalize that. So on a, on a district level, what that changes our focus on really is not a whole lot. You know, we, we don't, we don't, you know, adopt the different textbooks or change our curriculum, like those kinds of things would be pretty big ripples to a system. We do provide support through like our micro team structure, wherever, we've talked about it before, where they're assigned to different schools, our, our subject area folks and our grade level directors, where they'll go in and try to help. Could be professional development, it could be modeling lessons, it could be sitting in their, in their professional learning communities as they plan and look through things. Sometimes it is, certain schools will want to try a different curriculum or a different sort of thing with that, too, and we'll work with them on that. So really, at that point, it's kind of an individual school basis, based on the data, and our grade level directors kind of follow up through that throughout the year and see how they're doing for, on their progress with that.
And at the school level, those reports are those plans that they're producing for the state relative to this data. They're, they're setting, they're setting goals relative to those benchmarks for the school, right? Like a school in that plan would say, hey, we're going to try to hit this, and here's how we're going to get there, correct?
Correct. And the order how that goes, the district, too, has to submit their plan annually. So we'll use the data that, that Steve's presented now to present, where actually our team's beginning to work on that for a submission in March that sets kind of the, again, there's not a whole lot of flexibility, there's going to be something around English, there's going to be something around math, something around college going, you know, like all the college grad, or college readiness, those sorts of things. So all that will be in the district plan based on the data, and, and there'll be some, some tweaks or some maybe professional development or things that we'll be doing for that. And then schools then look under those categories, and where it makes, you know, sense to them, they prioritize off those goals based on their individual data, and that's what they submit to the state to prove through their grade level directors.
Thank you.
Senator.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you, and again, to reiterate the purpose of these data moments, it's just for, for us to have a conversation and just to see what's happening in our school levels, and to pay that respect to all the hard work that's going in, regardless of what the score says, like, it, schools are doing the work every single day, and so I want to make sure that we're always talking at some point about our schools and our kids and the outcomes when it comes to academic achievement. So thank you for doing that, and if board members have any specific data that they want to check out, let's use this as an opportunity. So see you next month, Steve.
Thank you. So before we move on to the agenda, a board member, she received an email update yesterday, and I just want to note that items eight, C sixteen, and seventeen were added after the agenda was published due to the time-sensitive nature with student teachers and interns being able to re, to begin spring semester. Also, the captions and backup documentation for items ten E, a UWorld grant for Austin East High School, and twelve G, a Second Amendment to a charter school agreement with Emerald Academy, were updated for our consideration. So I think everyone received an email on that. So moving on to discussion of the agenda, on the consent agenda, does anyone have any questions on one, two, or three? Four, five, or six? Seven, or eight?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like Scott to speak to the reasons why we have the partnership agreements and how that's helping to grow our district.
Great question. Madam Chair, rest of the board. So when we're talking about the educator prep programs, those are the, the programs that provide us with teachers. They have to be approved by the State Department of Ed, and there's a process for that. So you'll notice as we go through a lot of these things, we'll see a thing, like a primary partnership agreement. And we have a primary partnership agreement specifically with University of Tennessee Knoxville, with LMU, and with Johnson University. And those are agreements in which we are at the table with these folks, and we can lean in and talk about, you know, what we think our candidates should know instructionally when they come into the classroom. A lot of times what you'll see on the, there, aside from those three, would be just state-recognized partnership agreements. So we've got a person that wants to student teach from, I don't know, maybe East, East Tennessee State. That's a state-recognized partnership, and we're not a primary partner with them, meaning we haven't gone through the process, we haven't had an impact on the development of the program. But we have a recognized partnership so that we can allow their student teach, their, their teachers to come into our district for the purpose of student teaching. A lot of times what happens, we have a lot of school districts, and for us, it's problematic because they use language that makes it very similar to a memorandum of understanding. There's a lot of binding, little legal binding language in both a state-approved partnership agreement and a primary partnership agreement. A lot of our EPPs don't understand that we have an extra step when it comes to that. So a lot of times what happens, if they go to a smaller school district, the smaller, smaller school district will say, oh, that's just your partnership agreement, we'll just sign off on it. And, and then, okay, that's, that's good to go, but because it has that legal binding language in it, it has to go before you all. So the state have guidelines or deadlines that have to be met, and we may not get forms from an EPP, and they say, oh, we want student teacher to be in there, but they don't realize that it's not something that we can route to the superintendent just for his signature because it has that agreement language. Now what's nice about these programs is it, it is heavy on the, the collaboration. It's real heavy on the collaboration. It allows us to modify programs. For example, you'll see, you've seen regularly UTK come across, it's almost like we do modifications and changes to their, their MOU on a annual basis, it seems like, because we're changing the program. I mean, we added our Grow Your Own programs and memorialize those in there. We've pushed back. Historically, UTK had, historically was a five-year program where you would complete your undergraduate degree, and then you would do a year-long internship, all the while taking graduate courses in the afternoon. You would terminate from UTK with an, a master's degree at that point in time. It was typically a five-year program. Well, after looking at some research, that was kind of a stumbling block for, for maybe, you know, for our educators of color, because now you're asking a person to come and, and do a year-long internship without having a livable wage. So we kind of addressed that with Grow Your Own 1.0. And we also leaned in further. Now, in the University of Tennessee's program, the majority of their programs are accomplished in four years, and it's a semester internship, and, but it's embedded with those practical placements to try to remedy that situation. So it's given us an opportunity to have those hard discussions to address our, our needs as a district. I hope that answered your question.
No, it did. Thank you, Scott. And again, I just want to kind of lift up and show what the district is doing to the ripple effect of not having educators in the years to come. Like, we're going to have to continue to tap into these agreements to figure out ways to get new teachers into our pipeline, so thank you.
So any other discussion on those items in four through nine? Items ten and eleven? Twelve and thirteen? Fourteen and fifteen? And board policies, any discussion on nine, eight, or B? C or D? E or F? G or H? I or J? K, L, or N? Ten grants, discussions on A or B? C or D? E or F? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm making sure that the agenda that I downloaded the other day has got the right number on it. The, on F, with the, the donated acreage, I know it's close to Powell Middle School, but it's not adjacent to Powell Middle School. Is there an intended use for that?
We're already using it.
Oh, okay.
The, it's, it's got a bus stop on that site. We've got over a hundred kids who are eligible to catch the bus at that location, and a great, great many of them do. So we have student traffic there, we also have parents who come and drop off students there to catch the bus and wait for them, the bus to come back. So it's already in use, and, and this is, you know, this is not a piece of property that we were looking to obtain, but the owner was, you know, looking to make a donation, and we thought it was, you know, appropriate, given our level of use of the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. And contracts, we have one, eleven A, any discussion on that? Moving on to the regular agenda items, twelve, any discussion on A or B? C or D? E or F? And, okay. So item H, discussion and possible action on superintendent search. Do we have a report from our superintendent?
Yes, Madam Chair. Do you want me, we have a public forum as well on this topic. Do you want to bring it up now? Oh, it's worked, oh, okay. Show me, right? All right, I can get my report ready. All right. The superintendent's search committee met on October nineteenth in the AJ Building to flush out the details regarding working with Tennessee School Board Association in search for our next superintendent. We discussed the importance of finding candidates that have experience and proven results and have proven academic outcomes in school systems similar to Knox County. Board member Patty Bounds made the recommendation that we meet with TSBA Executive Director Tammy Grissom in person to learn more about how TSBA conducts their process. All three committee members agreed to meet Tammy Grissom at a halfway point in Cookeville, Tennessee. The meeting with TSBA was successful, and Isabel from New Sentinel joined us. The search committee was able to gain clarity regarding the recommended timeline, how TSBA plans on including Knox County community voices in their process, and their plan to recruit as many diverse candidates as possible. We were also able to gain insight on potential challenges we can face, specifically with the superintendent shortage and many superintendent vacancies nationwide. As someone who was adamant about not going with TSBA because of their lack of diversity representation and their cookie cutter approach, after meeting with Tammy and having the conversation, I have full confidence in the process that they will be able to provide. She was able to go deep, in deep details on how their community meetings work, how they analyze and synthesize the data provided, and how they'll work with the committee to do, how they'll work with the committee to do extensive research check of all candidates we as a board recommend. So I want to reiterate that I do feel confident in the process after meeting with them, because we got a lot more information. TSBA process is a process that will help the board stay on track and reach our ultimate goal, which is to hire superintendent for Knox County schools. For this to be an effective process, community participation is key. That's where we are seeking a board agreement to partner with KEF and other community organizations to help organize, market, and sponsor community meetings and the candidate in-person visits. Board member Betsy Henderson will provide more insight on the collaboration that we're seeking. You want to go through that now, or you want me to finish? Okay. So she'll provide more information on the collaboration that we're seeking. But lastly, I want to bring our attention to some agenda items of four topics that we kind of need to agree on to move things forward. So you have the projected timeline, the community schedule, and she'll, Betsy will talk about what that looks like and who should be there. Salary range that we as a board want to lift up, and then also bring up into the conversation that at the last board meeting we had, we voted for up to eleven thousand five hundred to do Plan B. However, I also remember at our retreat, we talked about possibly doing a superintendent evaluation tool, having TSBA create a evaluation tool, which is an additional fifteen hundred dollars. So, I would like to see if we can increase that $11,500 to $13,000 to include the superintendent tool and then also accrue any costs from the three candidate visits. So, that concludes my report. Feel free to ask any questions that's not clear, but the purpose of us going and meeting with Tammy was so that the search committee can have clear understanding on what we're even about to do with our search firm, so.
Betsy got the heard, sir. Okay.
So, I'm going to talk about, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, I'm going to talk about the community input portion of this process since that was a pretty big aspect for me, and I think that this is a great opportunity to have a healthy and robust relationship between KCS and between our community and our stakeholders. TSBA will provide a day of community input that includes a variety of focus groups, a lunch, and an evening community forum. And those are also included on the agenda. So, each forum or each focus group will be a different group, classified employees, teachers, and then in the evening, they will have a community forum. If somebody cannot make that day of meetings, there will also be an online survey. And any member, I want to stress this too, any member of the community can recommend somebody for superintendent. So, that way TSBA can get in touch with that, with those candidates and talk to them about the qualifications needed, the job description, so any community member is able to recommend somebody for this job. Once we go through that process and have identified our top three candidates, KEF can then help engage the candidates in a day of tours, lunches in our community. I've spoken to KEF about this and they're excited to collaborate with us and TSBA in collecting community input and working with our candidates. And on the lunch for the day of December 2nd, I'm going to have Terry, we can talk about that, but I'm going to have Terry reach out to the board members and the board members can invite two to three key members or community leaders in your district to that luncheon as well.
Patty, do you have anything that we missed from? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Babb?
Sure, and all my questions are probably for any of y'all that met with TSBA. I was wondering if you could talk about when you said that Tammy was talking about the lack of superintendents and the number of searches, kind of what she said was going on. I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, so it wasn't an in-depth conversation, but it was basically the conversation of the larger picture of what's happening in public education, where we have a, the teacher shortage is also a reflection of a superintendent's shortage, and then also the longevity of superintendents is dwindling. Historically, if we've had superintendents that, the average range is like five to eight and now is looking at three to five years and shorter than that. And so, there's a lot of vacancies out there and so she really spoke to staying to this timeline so that we can give the offer before, or not even before, but in time, so that we can get the best candidate that we want, because if we get a really strong candidate, they're probably going to have a lot of offers and we want to be able to extend that offer before somebody else snatches them up. So, that was kind of the conversation.
Okay, and then I was just wondering on the salary piece, if they do anything on helping us know, is our salary competitive on, kind of consulting on how our salary is?
Yeah, so I did ask for a range of salaries from just average superintendent salaries from the size of the school and then also Tennessee salaries, and so we have that information and we should give a range and an actual number. And I did specifically ask, well, do we also talk about like benefits and all the other stuff? And she said that usually comes into play when it comes to negotiation time.
Okay, and then my, sorry, one other question. On the focus groups that we're talking about and TSBA comes in and does that, do they then provide a report to us about their findings? Because I'm really curious to know what a lot of these stakeholder groups are looking for in a superintendent.
They will. They'll provide a report for each of those focus groups as well as the results of the online survey.
And she says she's giving us every result, every response that's out there, so we can look at every single comment that's been made.
And there was a date, she is coming in person to report that to the board.
Okay. Ms. Horn, thank you. That was my question, actually, Ms. Bounds is, has a date been set for that meeting yet with Miss, with Tammy Grissom?
Yes, and so according to the timeline, I want to make sure I get it right, too.
And also, the other question, the other second part of that particular question, is that when we, so I'm assuming she'll give that to us ahead of that meeting and then do we as a board then talk about what characteristics we want in the superintendent? Is that the order of events?
Um, I don't know. Let's see. And how many board members?
So, she's slated to come on December 8th to that meeting to present those reports.
So, the December 8th is presenting the reports from the community input?
Yeah, what time of day?
That's correct, yes. December 2nd will be the day of community meetings and the lunch where you would invite key community leaders from your district.
And the December 8th will be at our board?
During our board meeting, okay. Okay, and so will we get the information to look at it? Well, I guess the other question is, do we then have a separate meeting outside of a board meeting to set up criteria? Is that on here on this timeline? Does that make sense?
So, we adopt the criteria on that. So, she's going to, so even before the 8th, we have given the plan that we select, they meet with individual board members, and then we also attend that mayor, the meeting, the community meeting. So, that's two opportunities for us as a board to give our criteria into it. She specifically mentioned that she, board members, she prefers that only board members go to the one that we are assigned to, and that's the morning breakfast, simply because we want our community members to be able to speak freely, as freely as they choose to, and our teachers and our classifieds without the presence of a board member there. So, we'll have two opportunities as a board to give our criteria. And then when she reports, if we don't like any of that, then as a board, we can say, well, we want to see X, Y, Z. So, that meeting at the report, that's where we'll get all of the information from the community, from us, et cetera.
Okay.
Is that clear?
I think so. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say thank you to the committee. Appreciate all the work that you all are doing on this. I know it's a lot of additional work and I know that you guys are putting in incredible effort into it. And also appreciate having all the timeline and the community meeting schedule and all that kind of thing at a time. I think that's really helpful. I've got a couple of questions. So, on the timeline piece of it and some of it, some technical things there toward the end, I think all that flows well. And I'm assuming that the March offering of contract is to try to, like you said, make sure that we can get an offer early into folks so that they don't potentially get taken up by other districts, right? Because I know we talked at our retreat about, you know, about an expanded timeline. So, I completely agree with that. I know we also had some conversation about when to, when a superintendent might start their position. So, right here on the timeline, it recommends July 1, which is five weeks before the start of school. We had some conversation about possibly moving that up to June 1, which would give nine weeks and having a little bit of an overlap. I'm sure some of that's based on when a new superintendent would be available, depending on when their school system lets out that they might be hired at already, but was there any, did the committee have any conversation about that?
Yes, I'm glad you asked that because that was a piece that I missed out. So, we did bring that up because we were, as a committee, we were saying that sounds good to work under, kind of learn the ropes about Knox County schools and learn from superintendent. And Tammy Grissom lifted up her experience with doing something in that nature and it was basically shared that that can create an environment that would not be a healthy environment for that month because you have staff that is unsure who to report to at that time, right? And it can, it can cause unnecessary conflict when you have somebody that's incoming and then somebody that's leaving. And so, it just isn't a healthy, but then we also talked about how superintendent time as well, he's going to be off in his retirement, still very much hopefully willing to, you know, assist and guidance and if needed. And so, we did lift that up because we did think that that was an amazing idea, but she's going from her years of experience of doing this and she had real concerns about it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I've read this detail somewhere, but I don't see in the timeline, so correct me if I'm wrong. Is the, is the goal that they're going to pare down to three finalists? And if so, is there an opportunity to potentially offer up more? I like the idea more of five finalists that the board are looking at. Three seems pretty slim to me.
So...
Has that been some conversation?
Yeah. Daniel, where did I mean it? So, we did talk about that.
Well, I haven't been at your committee meetings. That's what I'm asking. Did the committee discuss it?
Yeah, we did talk about that, no. Because we did talk about, we did go in there, we're saying, hey, we want five candidates. The reason why we dwindled it down to three, and this is a board decision, so if the board decision wants to do that, that's fine, is the February 15, 16, and 17 are full days and in the afternoon, that is when they will present to us and we as a board get to ask whatever questions. And so, because those are three full days of staff time, board time, that is the reason why we went with three versus five.
Because it's one day per candidate.
Yes, one day per candidate. So, that's why we went with the top three versus the top five.
Okay.
So, that was the rationale behind that.
Okay, and then one last, two last questions. One is related to evaluation tools. I know we did talk about that at our retreat and some of the, what we talked about was the possibility of looking at employing an aspect of our evaluation that would be a 360? Was that something that was discussed and does TSBA have, do they do that type of evaluation tool?
Yeah, we didn't go in-depth about the evaluation tool that they offer. I'm sure that is something we can tell them we want to include into the evaluation tool if we as a board decide to go with that 1,500 with them. The reason why we, I recommend that we do get a superintendent evaluation from them is that they can help us craft as we're starting this new process to start with something new versus what we've had in the past. So, that's something we can add to that, I believe.
Thank you. And Betsy, can you say a little bit more about the, what you all discussed around KEF's role? I was a little bit lost in what you were meaning by that.
Okay, so KEF will, is it the, they'll do whatever the board wants to do.
Sure.
So, you know, since TSBA is leading this search, we've tasked them to do a lot of this work, but KEF wants to play a community partner. And so, when we've picked the three final candidates, they want to help in forming those three days where the candidates come.
Helping structure those three days.
For the community, yes, so they will help facilitate that part or any lunches that we need to do for those candidates as well.
And we also talked about having KEF and whoever may be, but help us market and get as much information out to the community so that community can give input on this. It's a finite amount of time and the finite amount of time is just to make sure we stay on the timeline, but we need as many hands on deck to get it out to the community and given what they've been doing with Ford Next Generation and tapping into different community members that usually are not involved, then I feel confident that they'll be able to help us push it out as well.
And then the last thing is not a question, it's an idea. I'd love to see for the community to be able to follow this process a little bit easier. So, you know, right now, unless you happen to go, to be able to go to a community meeting or one of the committee meetings, which one of them was out of town, or if you read Isabel's article, which, you know, I don't, we had some comments earlier, but that's not necessarily the place that everybody goes to get their information. I'd love to see us develop a page on our website that kind of outlines, it has our timeline once it's approved. It kind of marks off the milestones that, as we've met them, kind of where we are in the process. I also think it would be good to have a place where we include those committee minutes. Any kind of news that's generated about the search, I think that could go there as well. And then the last thing that I would ask for consideration about is, I think this last year and a half, we've, the community has lost some faith in Knox County Schools and its leadership for a lot of reasons. We all know that. We've gotten a lot of the emails and things like that. And I think one of the ways to build confidence is to allow the community to follow this process as much as possible and I'd like to have some consideration about maybe recording the search committee meetings. Not, I don't, I don't think it needs to be livestreamed, but where it's, there's a record there and people want to go and watch it, they can and whatever, so that way they can kind of keep track with that conversation along the way and not just at the regular board meetings times when we get updates.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I think that we already had addressed that and I'll let Evody speak to that, but I think going forward, just like with any committee meeting that we have or have had at the past in the AJ, those are all recorded. If they can be livestreamed, even better, but I think that's just a given. I mean, since I've been on the board, we always do those meetings and record them, so I would assume that we would do the superintendent's search committee, but we already had addressed that, too. Do you or Betsy one want to speak to what we had in the, talked about as far as the webpage and how we get that information out to the public?
Yes, so that is something that has already been addressed and something I've talked to Carly about. We didn't, we have not moved forward with any decision because we want to make sure that the board agrees with what we're about to do, because once we vote next week, this is the plan. And so, we want to make sure if there's any suggestions, input, whatever it may be, is done within this week to next week, because once we vote on the 10th, the online survey goes up on the 11th. And so, there's no change. And so, that is why it's been kind of, if people feel like it's only been connected to the board and the committee, then I apologize for that, but it's for us to kind of get our ducks in the row before we go public and have to get ducks in the row there. So, we're trying to make sure everything is as clean, is as neat as possible before we go live, but that is something that Carly and I have talked about, is creating a landing page on Knox County Schools webpage and uploading the meetings and stuff. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, and I don't, don't get me wrong, I don't think, I'm not saying that is the feeling of this process and I understand why we haven't acted on it yet because the board hasn't approved something. I didn't see that as a discussion point in this agenda and so that's why I brought it up to say, can we elevate that aspect of it? And I know in this community process, from what I remember from what Tammy discussed when she came virtually to our meeting, there's really three questions that get asked, is kind of the way they do it. If, I don't know that we have to share them right now, but can, at some point, can the board be reminded of what the questions will actually be asked at those community meetings?
Yeah, I can, I think I recall two right now, which is, you have them? I have them in my notebook. One was, what's going well? What, you got a bet, too? We need it.
I have this written down. What's going well, what are the problems and challenges and personal characteristics you'd like to see in a superintendent?
And those are the three questions that every group will be asked and every, and she was pretty adamant about that as the topic and that's where we're going to stay on, focused on that. And I, she really emphasized the importance of making sure we as a board understand our ultimate goal is to find a superintendent before Bob leaves. And if we as a board can stay as focused on that, that will help us be in a position to have huge success when we give our offer and then when we start with a new superintendent.
Yeah, thank you again. I'm just, I appreciate your patience with all the questions, too. Just want to make sure I'm caught up with the discussions.
Ms. Babb?
This is a quick one and it's really a request of Terry, is our board secretary. I'm looking at these dates and I'm already starting to put them on there, but like that, if we could get a list of where we need to be, like that interview date already, I was like, gosh, I want to put that on my calendar because I feel like we've got to do that. So, I'm sure we have to wait till we vote on this next week, but if we could get a list of all these things that we really need to take part in, that would be great, just that I go ahead and get it on my calendar.
Yes, thank you. I was going to say, if there's not a problem with the law department or with Terry, I don't see why she couldn't send out these dates or as a temporary thing of where the board members fit into those and it wouldn't keep us from changing and revoting on it next week. So, to, just pencil them in on your calendar, yeah.
Right. Yeah. And we tried our hardest to make sure we did it on, like, the meeting times with Tammy and stuff or during board meetings, but the only ones that really are that 15 through 17. So, yeah.
So, any more discussion on that item?
I do, sorry.
Sorry, Ms. Owen.
Sorry, I've been looking at the dates really closely and I'm concerned that the time that we have for input seems really short. Is it possible to push that out a month? I'm looking from, from the time we first have community meetings, December, well, from now really, until December 2nd. I don't feel like that's very much time. Well, I don't feel like that's a lot of time for the community to really understand what's going on. Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Well, keep in mind that that survey's going out... Well, keep in mind that that survey's going out on the 11th, so the process starts the day after we vote on it, um, so I think there's more time than we realize.
Well, she says she's going to close the survey, so she's coming to report on the 8th. The survey would close on the 5th, December 5th, and she says she needed time for her team to collect the data to be able to report on the 8th. Now, board members, the conversation between the 8th and February, that was for us, that's the reason why it's closing, because we have to get the brochure out, we have to get the criteria, like, once we vote on the criteria, then you have to start marketing. And so that's giving you from December 8th to, so it's giving you two months to recruit the candidates. And so if we push it out a month, then we either lose a month on recruiting, or we lose a month on making the offer. So I'm not opposed to it, but it's the pros and cons of what it is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I definitely see your concern, Ms. Owen, but my concern is that if we go past December 2nd, I think people start to check out because of Christmas coming. I just don't think we're going to get the kind of participation that we would want if we, if we, I mean, I think you'd have to move it to, to January, you know, because I just think if you get much later into December, I don't think you're going to get the kind of participation that you want. So I would rather really try to hit it hard and make sure people know that that's coming, which we can start doing on it, you know, as soon as we vote on it, because that just concerns me. I just, you know, human nature is, when, when mamas have a lot to do, they just check out. I mean, you just can't do everything, so I, that would be my concern, so we're just to make sure we publicize it very well.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the survey, has there been discussion about also at least putting that out in Spanish?
So we can do, we can do all that, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know, I know we can do that, but if TSBA is analyzing it, does T, is TSBA comfortable analyzing it from a Spanish survey?
That was not asked.
I think that'd be a good question for TSBA, if they can handle that side of it, or if we're going to have to translate results and things like that, if we push it out in Spanish. And then the other thing that I would just, um, advocate for is for us to go all out in the communications about the opportunities, you know, social media, Bob's message, at least twice, you know, just hammer it home as much as we can over that period of time to let people know of the opportunities. You know, we are, in some ways, we're limiting it to one day of meetings and a survey, which is fine, but I think because we have so few opportunities, it's even more incumbent upon us to continue to let the community know, hey, here's your opportunity, there's not going to be another one, don't miss out, you know, I would just push strongly for us to keep that message out there during that period of time.
Yes, that'll be our role for sure, and that's where the community partners that we're hoping will tap in with us to continue. So my, our goal as the chair is to have a cohesive message that we can then just pass out to our community partners and say, hey, blast this as much as possible, so yes, we on the one accord there. But I just want to go back to reiterating, like, we could push it out the survey time, but we're going to, like I said, we're either going, something's going to sacrifice. The sacrifice is, oh, um, not having a long time recruiting candidates, or not giving the offer at a time where the candidates are on a hot market, so something's going to be sacrificed.
Ms. Fab.
I personally probably get along with Ms. Horn. Um, I mean, I understand where Ms. Owen's coming from, but honestly, you're either going to fill out the survey or you're not, and we're going to have three weeks to remind people, send it out. I mean, I think if principals can send it out in their parent messages, you know, obviously we've got the employees we want to hear from, that sort of stuff, but if there are multiple times that you're sent a survey and you choose not to take it, extending it for another month of continued reminders, I, I don't know that there's, I actually think the urgency of it, of a three weeks where we really blast it out and really can make sure, hopefully our media partners that come, seeing some of them here, will help us with that, but really just with, you know, social media, all the, you know, school messaging and stuff, I really think that we can do it, and I think people are either going to take the survey or they're not.
Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It doesn't matter to me, this is just a, a comment of general nature, that once you get to Thanksgiving, from Thanksgiving until after the 1st of the year, it's very difficult to get people to focus on something that they don't have to do. There are just too many other things going on, so. I, I can live with whatever y'all decide, I just, just want to throw that in.
Thank you. Moving on to item I, discussion impossible action on Knox County Board of Education Policy C-121, Director of Schools Qualifications and Selection. Did the committee have something to add on that, Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, this is just to see if there is any conversation from the board members regarding, specifically regarding, um, the requirements for a superintendent, and because the TSBA will need to know, kind of needs to know after this vote who they should be going for, so if you look at the attachment from the job description last time, specifically a master's degree in education, preference in doctors, like, are there any things, are there anything on here regarding the requirements or the must-have of superintendent that we need to discuss about and make a decision on? There's requirements that you'll have just because of the state of, state of Tennessee, but is there anything that we want to add or take away? And we can use that last job description as a, as a starting base. Is that clear?
I don't know. Jennifer? I just had a question. Um, I, I was understanding that TSBA would be creating those qualifications from their meetings with us, is that incorrect?
No, that, no, let me clarify. So I'm specifically referring to, do we want a superintendent with a doctorate degree? Is that going to be mandatory for us? And because we will need to, I mean, that could be something in the, that come out in the surveys that everybody says in the county that this is who we want, and that's something we'll adopt too, but I wanted to give an opportunity for us to go ahead and lift up our conversation about that, if need be.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you. So I, I guess I had a similar thought when I looked at this. I was assuming this was here for our information, and that we would make those final determinations after the survey information. Okay, I think that, because I would like to hear from the community and hear all that feedback, really, before we, we can discuss it, but I would really like to hear all that feedback first, before we really put pen to paper on that.
Sounds good, I ju, I bet that works, and I just want to say, it's a board policy, so if we do have those specific things we need to kind of lift, look at the policy again. But the policy's pretty vague, too, so I just wanted to bring it to our attention, that we do have a policy attached to the qualifications.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So about that policy, lines four through six, that's just the minimum in state law, correct? Um, this is policy C-121. Is that correct, Gary? Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Watson, that's, uh, this is pretty basic policy, uh, not much use, really, to be honest, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I guess my point in saying that. Yeah, and I guess that's my point, is I don't know that there's anything we need to do to shift policy, because rows 10 and 11 kind of allow us to do it based upon each search and whenever it happens, so.
So, um, last we have item J, and I will ask Ms. Henderson to speak to this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, four families sued KCS back on September 1st, saying that we were in violation of the ADA because we did not have a mask mandate. During the preliminary hearings, KCS attorneys argued that the current virtual program was a reasonable accommodations for students that have a medical condition, which puts them at an increased risk for COVID. In his September ruling, and I'm referring to pages 34 through 37 of the judge's ruling, the judge ruled that in some ways, our virtual program does mimic a brick and mortar school. It's set up with an elementary, a middle, a high school, there are certified teachers, teaching-approved curriculum, they use the same textbooks, and there's administrative staff as well as their own counselors. But he ruled in other ways, there are obvious differences from a brick and mortar, mortar school. Students are not physically present in the classroom with their teacher and peers, they cannot raise their hand, they have to push a button to show a hand raise, they do not have the opportunity to eat lunch with other students, to go to PE, or engage in recess. Students in virtual programming must have a caregiver present, and some students have parents that work, and they can't provide this, and students still have to enter the building for state testing. The intent of this resolution is to survey parents and guardians of at-risk children to find out how many are interested in an enhanced virtual program if a mask mandate goes away. Once we know how many would be interested, KCS can then develop a plan to be in compliance with the judge's ruling on the ADA. Again, the two biggest issues with Judge Greer are having a caregiver present, and this would allow students who choose this option to be at school with a facilitator, and it also addresses the problem that they need a space at school for testing, as well as give them an opportunity to have recess and lunch with their peers, two activities that do not require a mask. Once the survey is complete, KCS staff will be able to plan appropriately to ensure that the virtual program is in full compliance with judges, with the judge's ruling on ADA. The program would then be opened up to all students, there will be an equal number of spots for students, for children, defined as medically at risk and general education students. This program will help alleviate the issues Judge Greer has with our virtual program and ensure that we are in full compliance with ADA. Background on the resolution.
So any discussion, Ms. Owen?
I'm not sure who this is a question for, maybe Mr. Dupler. Is it legal for us to have a virtual program that is separate from our three virtual schools?
Thank you, Ms. Owen. As I understand Ms. Henderson's proposal, I don't think she's proposing that these, that these schools be separate from the virtual school, that these schools are actually, you know, a hybrid, if you will, uh, part, part of the virtual school, uh, but, but also connected to the brick and mortar as well. That's, that's my understanding, and, and, you know, I mean, and this is, um, this is something, uh, novel that, that she's, that she's pitching here, and, um, so, I mean, I can't, I can't say with 100% certainty, but, but certainly, uh, that's my understanding of the proposal, and she can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, they are not separate, it's just enhancing the current virtual program that the judge is saying is not in ADA compliant.
So, Ms. Henderson, assuming, let's, let's just say that there was interest at every school, have you looked at what the potential cost would be, or how long it would take to set that up?
Uh, John and I did go over that plan, so he may be able to speak a little bit more, but again, we're trying to gauge an interest in this. There should, we talked about there probably won't be that many students that would want to participate in this. I know many students who fall in this category that are medically fragile and are very, um, against doing virtual school or wearing a mask in the school as well.
Mr. Rasslin.
Thank you. Yeah, so, again, I'm, I'm probably going to be where Mr. Dupler is on this. I think my understanding of where we are right now, um, and we had a lot of discussion about, about that, is that this would be looking at our current virtual students, um, and, and we know that some, you know, added to that, we're, we're probably in the neighborhood of 500 kids who are currently enrolled in the virtual school. I think it's been five to 700 different times around in there. I, I don't know that exact number off the top of my head right now, uh, that are in the three virtual schools. So my understanding, again, if I'm understanding correctly, Ms. Henderson, is that that would be the group that would be asked if they wanted to come and attend, they would stay on a virtual platform, but they would just be in, in some geographical cottages, as you're calling it, um, to be able to participate in live school to the extent where they would be attending a school, but they still would be on their virtual, uh, with their virtual teachers that are in their virtual schools, and that would just allow them, would allow families an opportunity to come to campus, um, and maybe something like a teaching assistant or something in the room. Probably, the way, the way it made sense to me is, is back when we went virtual, um, you know, last year, that there were some, some different organizations who were like, the Muse is one that comes to mind, that were popping up like a, like a learning pod and that kind of thing, was the, was the, was kind of the concept I got, and getting my, trying to put words in your mouth, Ms. Henderson, so if I'm off, let me know. And so, again, my understanding is that that would be offered to the kids who are currently enrolled in one of our three virtual schools, that we would have to then find, uh, space and, and things to offer those in some, in some certain areas. So, you know, your max would be, everybody could, could say they wanted to do that and attend school, and so you're talking about having to accommodate, you know, nearly 500 kids, but that would be kind of the max on that, um, if, if we didn't open it back up for transfers and that sort of thing, but just offered it to the, the students who are, who are currently in virtual schools, is my understanding.
So we're only talking about students in virtual schools?
That's, that's my understanding of Ms. Anderson, Ms. Henderson's proposal.
We're currently surveying the medically fragile children to see who would be interested, and then open it up, kind of a lottery system, uh, because there also has to be general education students in there as well.
And would that lottery system be only virtual students, current virtual students?
Uh, we could open it up, it's our, and we can do whatever we want. If, if somebody is currently wearing a mask at school and is uncomfortable, they could have this opportunity to go to one of these learning pods as well.
So we're not talking about just virtual students?
It could be, I mean, we could do either one, if you just want virtual students.
Here's my concern, my concern is, if, if we put this out there, it's something that parents are going to assume that we are going to do, and then if, if we end up looking at even one classroom at each school, assuming that's a portable classroom with a teacher and an assistant, just one teacher, just one assistant, and a portable classroom at each school, we're looking at about $36 million.
It wouldn't be a certified teacher, you just have to have a caregiver, it could be a TA, it does not have to be a certified teacher, and we're doing, this, this proposal is for a survey to gauge interest. If it's astronomical, then so be it, but we have to try. At this point, we have nothing.
So we're talking about having medically fragile children in a room with no certified staff?
Judge Greer asks for a caregiver be present, and that's what we will be providing them to make this a reasonable alternative accommodation.
Ms. Fab.
Yeah, I guess I see this creating more problems than solving problems, and maybe I don't fully understand it, but it's, it seems like we've got people that have chosen virtual school, so they're able to accommodate their children at home if, if they've chosen virtual school. So now we're trying to say, you've already chosen virtual school, because obviously you can accommodate it in some way, and so what we're going to do is just have a cottage that we're basically providing the babysitter for to do virtual school, is that?
So right now, our.
I don't get the benefit of that.
No, I get it. So, so right now, our virtual program is not ADA compliant by Judge Greer's ruling. We are trying to bolster the virtual program so that it is ADA compliant, because right now he's saying it is not meeting that law.
I guess I'm concerned, and, and this is probably getting into the lawyer speak, but I feel like we've, we're taking what the judge has said, and we're creating something that we think will comply, we're going to go to a lot of work, and maybe people will be interested, maybe they won't, hoping this is maybe going to change his mind, when I don't really, I don't really feel like I've seen Judge, him go, well, if you create something like this, um, that I think, I, I feel like this is almost cropping up more ADA issues and lawsuits than what we've got going on right now, and maybe, and maybe I'm wrong, and maybe I don't understand the legalese behind this.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. So he had five reasons of why our virtual program is an issue, and this alleviates those five issues that he has.
I guess Gary Dupler.
And we could take it to the appellate court as a tool in our toolbox, to say, look, the judge had these issues with our program, we fix these issues, or here is a survey, here's a plan to go forward as a tool in our toolbox to go back to the courts.
And do we not, are there other ADA issues that this would raise, or we feel like this is checking the box of every ADA problem?
Mr. Dupler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Fab. Well, I, as Ms. Henderson said, I mean, the judge's order, uh, does, does say these things, and does say that, that he has problems with, with ADA accessibility with our virtual program, so, so what she says is absolutely correct. You know, we, uh, we dispute that, uh, in the lawsuit, uh, so, so we're saying, and Knox County Schools is saying, well, you know, we do believe our virtual program is effective. virtual program is effective. But what Ms. Henderson is proposing is, again, as I understand it, just a survey to, to try and find out what's the feasibility. We would not advise the board to send out a survey saying, you're going to do this, because you have no clue if you're going to be able to do this. I mean, you know, what she's proposing is get some kind of numbers and then figure out, you know, what, what this would look like, what the num, what the cost would be and, and people and, and everything else. So, but, I mean, to her point, I mean, she is trying to address something the judge has, has identified in his order. So, that's, that's what we can say at this point. But we don't know what this program would look like, because, because Ms. Henderson's not, not, not specifying what the program would look like until she's asking for the board to approve this survey. And it may or may not go forward, is my understanding. It's just figure out what the numbers are.
Mr. Watts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Is, is it fair to say that your primary reason for suggesting this as, as a strategy or as a potential opportunity to have the judge lift the mandate?
The judge's had issues with our program, and I think it's not in ADA compliant, so we need to meet those, those needs of the judge. Or have a tool that the lawyers can use in court that's board-approved.
So, so the, so a major goal of this strategy would be to have the mandate lifted, correct?
That would be one benefit.
Yeah. Okay. So, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. When I read this ahead of time, I didn't, I wasn't thinking about virtual students at all, because to Ms. Bab's point, virtual students have kind of already made their choice. And from my understanding, the plaintiffs in this case are, were asking for what they were asking for, so they could be physically in person in a school. So I'm, I'm, I don't know who to ask this to, but it would seem like to me that if this, if the plaintiffs didn't fill out the survey and say, I'm interested in this, those specific families, because they're the ones that have brought the case, then I don't, to what degree would the judge even care about? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, we don't have a class action. We don't have, you know, hundreds of folks that have, you know, brought this case. It's really just three or four. So I don't know, I'm trying to, if, if a primary goal is to get it lifted, and if the plaintiffs say, that's not an option I want, does that make sense what I'm saying?
Give me a minute. I'll address that one. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Watson. No, I don't think the goal is to have the plaintiffs say yea or nay. I mean, you know, the judge's order said, one issue that was raised in court was, we have this virtual option. And these plaintiffs, or whoever else, feels like they need to, to, to not be around people without masks to, to go to a virtual option. So, so that was raised as an option. Well, the judge said, no, I don't, I don't, I don't approve of your virtual option, and here's why, for those five reasons that Ms. Henderson listed. So what, what the school system could do with, if it decided to do such a plan, is figure out how, how you can meet those concerns of the judge. For students in general, I'm not talking about, I mean, I mean, you're talking about plaintiffs. Doesn't have to be specifically the plaintiffs, but, but a better option for students in general.
So it would seem like the, then what you would want to do is survey those pe, those students, those parents of those students who are not in virtual school, who are medically fragile, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Because, I mean, Mr. Ryswick said several times that it would be about virtual students, but it's-
You're correct. Yes. I, I would like to see students surveyed as well that are in person and are uncomfortable being there.
Because what you're basically saying, if a, if a person said, yes, I'm interested, I have a medically fragile student, and right now, we're in in-person school and we're wearing masks, and I don't really want to do that, I'd much rather be in this enhanced virtual situation, I'll still be on property, I get a virtual instructor, but I don't have to be in a mask anymore, right? That's kind of the, that's what you're kind of listening for.
Right. Yes. I'm just trying to provide more choices and opportunities.
So that's what you're listening for, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so then I guess my, I guess one of my concerns is, whenever people are surveyed, I think they naturally assume that there's a possibility of the thing being followed through with. And I know Gary's point is, we certainly want, want to survey people and say, we're gonna do this. But I think there's also an assumption that you could do it if you're going to survey them. So I don't know, I mean, I think our parents have been, man, they've been jacked around for 18 months. I mean, would everybody agree with that, at least? I mean, our parents have been just up and down, back and through, hey, apply, apply for this, but now we're going to change the rules on you. And people who aren't even in your life are part of the people changing the rules, right? And so, I don't know, to me, this feels a little bit more like a yank in the chain. And I'd like to see, I'd like to hear from, from Bob and his team about, what do you all feel about the real possibilities of offering something like this? And, and do you think it's viable logistically? And I know we're not trying to craft it right now, but you had to give some thought, I would assume, to what the logistics might be, so.
May I add to that question and say also the logistics of having the least restrictive
We, we have spent some time talking about it, and let me just say too, we'll do whatever this board charges us to do, so I want to make that real clear. Then we've talked about some challenges with it. I mean, some of those have been, even been talked about, you know, now too, well, you know, would the judge lift the mandate? I mean, I, nobody knows that, I, I don't know. So if we go through this and we do this, are we still where we are today? You know, is one speculation, I guess, but we, we talked about some operational challenges, I guess, in terms of transportation and, and things of that nature. We're already short drivers and with routes and so forth. We talked a little bit about some instructional challenges and that being that we already can't find teacher assistants for positions. I think we probably have quite a few special education assistant vacancies, I would say, right now. So, you know, again, that, that would be something we would have to try to do, is fill, fill these positions when we're already not filling positions, I guess, that we have. So that, that's another challenge. And, you know, again, my feeling was, and we'll survey the parents, but I didn't want to, and it would have to be feasibility of it, because I don't want people to think that, hey, just because you get the survey, this is going to happen, because I don't know, I don't know, I don't know from a cost standpoint, from a resource standpoint, human resource standpoint, we could deliver. I mean, that would be something we would just have to go through, a process we would have to go through to determine that, so. And Ms. Bab mentioned it too, it seems like, you know, there's a lot, lot more hoops to jump through with this than, you, you know, so I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's kind of where we are. I don't know if Russ or John, you know, Scott, y'all, you know, want to elaborate a little bit more, if I've missed, missed points that we've talked about.
I, I think you, you hit my point that, that I was concerned about, but I, I want to get a little more specific, if, if I can. I'm, I'm concerned about being able to provide transportation. I'm, you know, not just for this program, but it, because it would be an add, but I'm concerned about being able to provide transportation tomorrow. And, and, and I can tell you that right now, on a daily basis, we're running what we call between a 1.5 and 2% failure rate. And, 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 and our terminology, the way we measure that is, is we consider it a failure if a bus route is running 15 minutes longer than it is scheduled to run, or later than it is, is scheduled to run. So that's the challenge. And, and, and what's driving a lot of that is that today, we're, we're short 35 drivers. Our, we're testing 11 new drivers this week, but that won't fix the problem, and it probably won't come, come close to fixing the problem. So that's, that's my challenge with buses. Facility-wise, as, as we have talked about this, these folks would need to be more or less in a self-contained, separate facility. We don't have a lot of places that, that align with that. We've, we've, we've talked about using portables or, or locating it at, at places where there, there are portables. The problem is, there's not much in the way of portable stock that's available and suitable, because if we've got a portable someplace, it's because we need a portable someplace, and it's, it's generally in use. If I had two portables right now, I'd move them to Hardin Valley Elementary School, as opposed to waiting till February for two we've ordered to get here. So that's, that's really, really a significant challenge for us on, on the operational side. So I, I too am, am concerned about, you know, surveying folks on something that we're, we're not 100% sure we can implement.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my feelings are that even, having listened to what Russ said, even if we had the resources and could meet all five of the conditions that the judge has set forth or objected to, there's no guarantee whatsoever. He is a federal judge, he's appointed for life, and he can do whatever he wants to do. And there's nothing that anybody can do about it, unless he commits some, any of his crime, you know, or something, which he's not going to do. So, I mean, we might be just wasting our time. I mean, it's, it's good that we are trying to do something, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure what impact with the judge it would have. I just wonder what impact if this type of case had occurred in Green County, what kind of ruling he would come down with. You would think he would come down with the same thing, but you don't know. Might be hard to get out and go to dinner, might even be hard to go to church. Thank you.
Ms. Bounds, did you have something? Okay. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Russ, you just talked about, you know, the relatively, the relative feasibility of this. If you had to, just, just you right now, put that on a scale of zero to 100%, I mean, what's your comfort level in terms of feasibility of actually making this work?
I'd say the feasibility is directly aligned to the number of people that would decide they wanted to avail themselves of the program.
Okay.
If, if you had, if you had one person, we could probably figure out a way to make it work.
Sure.
You know, it gets exponentially more difficult as, as the interest goes up-
Yep.
-from there. So, you know, you're, you're asking me to quantify something that I don't have a specific number on, but I, I can tell you that, that it, it will get exponentially more difficult the more people that, that you are committed to.
That, that's helpful. And let me just say this, I, I mean, I think all of us on the board have, we've expressed lots of times over the last month and a half, or two months, or however long it's been, that, I mean, there's certainly things in Judge Greer's order that, I mean, I think all of us to a point are frus, really frustrated with. I know, I hate that in the order, there was nothing that talked about environmental reprieve from the mandate, right? There's nothing in it that says, when the environmental conditions change, we can lift this, right? And I think there's, you know, I think some really cha, some big challenges with it. And so I appreciate any board member who's trying to work through those challenges and provide an alternative. I, I just think that this, I don't know that we're going to get a win out of this, is what I'm saying. I don't, and again, I appreciate the effort. I just, I think there's, it's an extremely heavy lift, I think, depending on the number of students that you have, and maybe an impossible lift. And again, I feel like we just, we unintentionally, and other people have helped us, have done it as well, our families have just been jerked around a lot. And I think this is one more thing that we potentially throw out, and it causes confusion and people, we start getting Facebook messages about, oh, you got to do that, and, you know, that's going to, the judge is going to, has got to change his mind now, right? Like, we're going to get those messages, and that's not your intent to stir that up, but that's going to stir. As, as soon as we say, survey, go, I mean, that's going to happen.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just think that right now, we have nothing. And if we do a survey, which costs nothing, and we message it to say, hey, this may be something that is not feasible, but we are trying, again, a survey, it doesn't take a lot of time to put together and costs nothing, it could be 25 kids who are interested in this. That's doable. If it's 2,500 kids, no, that's not doable, absolutely not. But I think that the timing of this, we're looking at the earliest into the school year, and if it goes to trial, we're looking at years of our kids in masks. And it's worth trying something, because right now, we literally have nothing. And we are all getting messages from parents. Our parents' choices have been taken away from them. What's next? What's next that's going to be taken away from them? And so I'm coming with something and trying to think outside, outside of the box, trying to be creative, and come up with something that we can give these parents.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure how I feel about this right now, but I just want to say, I appreciate you thinking outside the box, and I appreciate you bringing something to the board that could, that answers those five questions. And so, so anyway, I, like I said, I'm not sure how I feel about it, because I, I definitely, you know, I'm very concerned about, you know, the issues about spacing and where we'd put these people and staffing and all of those questions. Those are definitely legitimate questions that we definitely would have to consider, but I just appreciate you thinking outside the box, so thank you.
Did you have something? So any more discussion on that item? Okay, so we will move on to public forum. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two people signed up for public forum, starting with our first one, Mr. Lance McCoy. If you can state your name and county residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm Lance McCold, Knox County. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for letting me speak to you. I want to talk to you about the superintendent search tonight. I believe the proposed schedule is too hasty for a decision this important. The selection does not need to be made by mid-March. I appreciate the concern about maybe competition, people getting hired out from under us. I have a hard time crediting that. It's not like we're a little tiny district somewhere, we're a big district that pays a lot of money. And I think that people that want to come here are people who are, if they know they're in the running, they're going to stay around to find out. But whatever it is, you know, whoever we select is going to have to complete their contract probably in June, so, you know, we aren't going to be able to get them here very early. But basically, I want to say, let's not act in haste. The TSBA approach for searching for superintendent nationally is inadequate. The KCR, KCS Human Race Sources Department did a great job doing a national search for a security chief, and as a result, we now have an excellent security chief. The superintendent search deserves no less. TSBA is not doing an aggressive national search, we deserve better. The proposed schedule limits public input on the characteristics of the superintendent to a survey, which most people ignore, and a mere hour, one day, December 2nd, that will be inconvenient for almost everybody in the county. Before preparing the criteria, Knox County Schools should host no fewer than four public meetings in places that are relatively convenient, especially to the more remote parts of the county. The superintendent search criteria and the final selection are the most important decisions of the process. And I urge you to do a more thorough public involvement process before selecting the criteria. I will say, people don't just automatically have these ideas, there has to be sort of, you have to prime people with discussion about what is and what isn't, and a one-day thing is not a sufficient prime to get good input from people. Finally, I'll say that this is the most important single decision most of you will make for Knox County Schools. I urge you to act with the same careful deliberation that such a decision deserves. If you act in haste, the community and our children will repent at least. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kim Crittich. If you can state your name and county residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Kim Crittich, Knox County. I'd like to speak about the 2021 LEA compliance report, but first, I would like to clarify my understanding of a few things that were said here regarding the learning cottage proposal. This is a class action lawsuit. By definition, you don't name- By definition, you don't name everybody. You just have to name a few, have a few named representatives. It affects every single school and not just the schools of the four plaintiffs. It applies to every child in every school with these qualifying categories of disabilities. So that's hundreds of kids. So I believe I'm correct on this, and I hope that helps clarify something. One more comment on, and I do appreciate you thinking outside the box, because I would have loved something like that for students who need aid support so that they're -- I appreciate that. I truly do. But I will say, to maybe clarify my understanding, is that the ADA does not allow segregation based on disability. You can't put the kids with disabilities in a separate school, like those who need a nurse, or those with common medical conditions. And as Ms. Bab said, I certainly don't want to see another lawsuit about this. Now, with my last remaining time, on your 2021 LEA compliance report, there's a box check that says, "I certify that the LEA is in compliance with all federal and state education laws and SBE rules." I disagree. And I disagree with trying to work with the school, for the school system, for all these years. Again, we did not meet our inclusion target for the last reporting data period, 2019-2020, so that was not affected. That snapshot was back before the pandemic hit. And we have never met our target in this area. So we've, we, if we're in compliance, then why aren't we meeting our target? And I can say personally, and my friend Tiffany said it best last night when we were talking about the funding formula, she said, "Knox County is choosing litigation over education because KCS has calculated that very few people even know their students' rights, and even fewer will file for a due process hearing." So that's the wrong kind of funding formula, in my opinion, where money is going to attorneys instead of instructions. So I would just like to say that I'm speaking this week, so you have time. I'd be happy to send you any and everything having to do with information about this, but I believe you all need a corrective action plan. That's another box you can check. And I would really like you to ask the right questions of the law department about how much money we're spending, how many settlements they've agreed to, what cases they're appealing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
So moving on to board forum, we'll start with our student rep, Mr. Jen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I just wanted to know, I know that this previous, early November 1st, we had a lot of college applications due, and I know that a lot of students, especially our seniors in particular, are facing a lot of stress with regards to this very monumentous decision in their life and this very monumentous process that they have to go through. I just hope that, you know, if there are any seniors out there who are feeling excessive amounts of pressure due to this process, that, you know, they do perhaps talk to friends, counselors, parents, trusted teachers, things like that, to see if they can hopefully alleviate some of that pressure. Also, related to that, I know college can be very expensive as well, and I just want to remind all of our seniors out there that there are many, many scholarship opportunities out there for them. There are scholarships that provide aid that's based on the application process, that you may have to write essays and things like that, but just have to keep an eye on them. And I also know that a lot of colleges have their own financial need assessments that many students miss out on, simply because they do not see it, they don't know about it. So I would also encourage all of our seniors to look into that and see if the schools that they're applying to have the specific financial need applications that they have to receive from those seniors in order for them to receive the aid that they need in their college education.
Thank you. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to let the administration know that I appreciate the support Fulton has had this week, and their administration is also very appreciative.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Thank you. I just wanted to lift up a couple of things, a couple related to Bearden High School, and mainly because I'm just so crazy impressed. I couldn't imagine doing this in high school, but I'm sure many have saw the article about Lydia, who had a perfect ACT and SAT score. I mean, that's just insane. So shout out to her and her family and the long journey that she's had through school, and also the Bearden High School ladies. Won state undefeated this year. But then I also wanted to elevate, again, that I really appreciate the school system taking the efforts to, and especially Chief Periard, I know he's been influential in this, to developing a listening process for the community around school safety and the MOA, and then also the shifts that we're trying to make to get more community engagement around the budgeting process. I mean, more and more and more, I think the ways in which we can gain the interest and the input of the community, the better we're going to be off for it as a district, no matter what the topic is. So I appreciate the efforts made in that.
Ms. Bab?
Okay, I'm going to give a quick plug while I'm here for something I'm involved with, which talks to college affordability, is the Tennessee Achieves Program. They are looking desperately for more mentors. We need them in our community. I have been doing it for about 10 years, and it's a very low-commitment way to really help our students that are trying to go to community college. So please go to Tennessee Achieves website if you are interested in mentoring this year.
Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to congratulate Fairgate's 16 National Merit semifinalists, of which Mr. Jen is one. Congratulations and good luck going forward. And also, I just, I feel compelled to say a word about parents speaking to school boards. And as most of you know, the National School Board Association recently sent a letter to President Biden regarding parents speaking out at Board of Education meetings. First, I want to be sure that our community knows that Tennessee School Boards Association is not a part of NSBA. I am currently an at-large member of TSBA, and we voted unanimously in June not to renew our membership. As noted in the recent TSBA press release, rather than focusing on educational issues, TSBA has become an advocate for issues that divide us. Second, I want to express my full confidence that if we have some issue of concern in our community, our local law enforcement and school resource officers, or I always get confused, school security officers are fully capable of dealing with the issues and would likely not need assistance from the federal government or the FBI. And so I'm thankful that we have law enforcement in our community that are quite capable. And lastly, I want parents, teachers, students, and all Knox County residents to know that I value your opinion. I took an oath to uphold the Constitution, and even if I don't agree with something you express, I fully value your right to hold your own opinion. The freedom to speak your mind and have your own opinion is one of the key characteristics of our nation. Throughout our country's history, we have been united in the ability to express opposing opinions and maintain respect for one another as we do it. I think we have a stronger, better government when citizens, especially parents in our case, are involved and engaged in voicing their opinions. Children who attend our schools do so based on the determination of their parents. It is the parent's role to be sure students are educated, and they have a right and a duty to be actively engaged in the educational process. I hope that more parents will engage. I call on our community to put aside differences that divide us and be united in our respect for one another and the right to hold differing opinions. I call on teachers to teach the standards without inserting their personal points of view. I call on parents to respectfully engage so that we can enjoy a true partnership in our joined pursuit to educate students and model for them having respect for other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Henderson?
I just want to agree with Ms. Horn and reiterate what she said. Thank you, Ms. Horn, for your words. And, you know, our freedom of speech is not domestic terrorism, and that letter in the Biden administration's targeting parents, I just find absolutely disgusting. And I just want to thank parents for being involved in their children's education and their lives, and just lift up our freedom of speech. Thank you.
Ms. Bounds? Mr. McMillan?
I will just reiterate that the previous, like you said, this state law at the national level, it will always -- It won't always be this way.
Ms. Satterfield?
Awesome. Thank you. I just want to bring more highlight to Knox -- bring more highlight to Knox County schools. I've gotten a lot of positive response from Tennessee Educated with a Color Alliance Fellowship, what our teachers are participating in. And I want to say thank you to the district for moving forward with this, because it's directly correlated to our strategic plan, which is eliminating disparity, specifically narrowing the achieving gap, specifically retaining our educators and providing high-level professional development. So I've been receiving a lot of positive reviews from that, so thank you for, Knox County Schools, for pushing forward in that area. And I just want to send some Road Runner love to our Falcon family during the times that you all are experiencing.
Thank you. And I would just like to take a moment, and this is going to make one of our security officers angry with me, because he says he was just doing his job, and that Officer Michael Kane was awarded the Lifesaver Award yesterday during their security in-service by Chief Periard. And, you know, we always hear a lot about the negative stories, but this wasn't, you know, due to action during the school day at one of our schools. I would just like to thank him and congratulate him on that. And with that, we are adjourned.